Would you have a prayer for our question?
Let's pray together gentlemen. Lord I love you, Lord I thank you for this day you give us today, Lord. Lord, thank you for allowing us to live in a country, Lord, where we can still come and openly worship you, Lord. Lord, we thank you for our blessings, we thank you for the rain that we received, Lord. Lord, we thank you for these men, we just ask that you be with them, Lord. Bless them, help them, give them wisdom, Lord, to run their county. These things in Jesus' name, amen.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which we stand in, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's see. I'll need an order please, uh, this big. You look like you're the first name we got here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I came to ask the county commission to consider signing an agreement between county, me, and Secretary of State. Right now, when you go file your LLCs, you write two checks. You did all checks, probate, judge's office, and a hundred dollar check to Secretary of State. You come to the office, you file it, we skip it in the mail, mail to Secretary of State's office. In 2015, the legislature passed a bill where we could go in and do electronic filing. So if you wanted to open your LLC at home, you could do it in the comforts of home. You pay your fee online, it's automatically, our fifty dollars is automatically deposited in our checking account. Doesn't cost the county anything by statute. It can't cost us money, it can't cost you money. All that would be handled through Alabama Interactive, which does our online businesses and the fishing, hunting, things like that. It's already set up with the state and I was just gonna ask y'all and I brought the stuff, y'all don't worry about it.
So you recommend that the county allow people to do that?
Yes, please, they can still come to probate office and file if they want to. This, I had a man in the office just a little bit ago, he goes, I could do almost all this online, but I had to bring this here. And I said, well, we're trying, if we can get that, he could've done it at home last night and printed out on his printer, here's your certificate. I have gone ahead prior to, because I want to make sure we could actually do it. And I contacted S and W, who's our computer network company, and they have spoken with the Secretary of State's office through Alabama Interactive. And it is something that our computer system can do. You would submit your documents online, electronic stamp from Marion County will be put on a fan within a minute with Secretary of State's office. And then, within just a few minutes, you can print out your business.
But we still get to pay our money?
Yes, we, it doesn't cost us a dime, we still get our fifty dollars and as soon as they do it, they'll pay on their credit card. Fifty dollars comes right into our account, a hundred dollars goes to the Secretary of State's, whatever convenience fee that they chose will go wherever that's supposed to go. It will not come to me account, it's just our fifty dollar file.
Okay, well, Monday we'll be, have to, be Monday before we can get a motion, more than a motion on itself.
Well, that was just gonna, give y'all that, that gives you some background information on, and then that is the actual agreement that the Secretary of State asked us to sign.
Doing stuff online is great and more convenient, but it's also got its drawbacks.
Yes, it does.
Because I just got word a little while ago, mayor called me, said Alabama Parish is leaving Hamilton, the offices, because people are paying their bills online. So, then there's no, nothing, nobody did, they're just saying it's not feasible for do this.
Costs them their money.
It's costing them money, so.
Well, they left again, so weird.
And this one won't cost us anything, if you're gonna have a business, you either come in and do it in person or online. Marion County still gets their fifty dollars, that, it wouldn't take any money away from the county. But thank y'all, I was gonna keep telling you, you got option to read it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you Ms. Kay with Dynamic?
Hi, I am.
Would you, uh, like to speak to the council?
Can you give a little bit of an introduction for what Kay's here for?
Ma'am?
I said, let me give y'all a little bit of an introduction about what Kay's here for. Kay is on the staffing side of Dynamic. And with what our county faces right now with the limitations of the twenty-nine hour and you have to provide health insurance for your part-time hands. Dynamic has got packages that they can do with us, to where we can utilize them as a staffing service. To be able to have part-time people at a rate that is comparable to what you're paying now. And when you do that, then they become employee of Dynamic, but you're gonna be able to contract with Dynamic and work them more than twenty-nine hours. We can do that in the offices and we can do that with general labor.
Yeah, so this one, me and you been discussing, like, one of my part-time people could go to forty hours, it's the same fate.
Right. The other thing that we can do with Dynamic staffing is we can utilize them to advertise in our local paper and online. And have people apply for jobs, their full-time jobs, and they can narrow down the applicant pool. Kind of like when y'all hired me, y'all went through manpower that was in Florence at the time. They narrowed down the applicant pool, they gave three people to the county commission, the county commission interviewed those people, and they made their decision from there.
So once again, I'm fixing to have to hire a full-time person because I have one, a part-time legion, called family sickness. So I can go through you, for you to take applications and narrow down and then come to me for choice.
Absolutely, you can, you can interview the people that you choose from what I send you. You could do phone screens if you would like. If you didn't like the three people we sent you, you could tell us something you're different, you're looking for, we could go back and reevaluate and send you, you know.
Final say so.
Yes, you still have the final say so of who you hire.
And he can, we could hire them as part-time, and then if they worked out, go full-time.
Yes, we asked that they stay for ninety days, just so we get the money back, we invest to hire them. We do background checks, we do drug screens. Of course, because they're our employee, they would be under our work comp, so you wouldn't have that. Of course, we could take care of all the taxes, SADA, and all that stuff. So all you really do is, is work the employee, basically.
How does y'all's pay scale on your part-time average out look, our pay scale on that?
Well, what we did, so that we could kind of get an idea of that, and we took our current part-time and how much we're paying with the benefits that go along with being part-time. We gave that hourly rate to them, the base rate, not the tax part that we pay, but the base part. And then from there, they adjusted it and went up on it, and y'all will need to sometime between now and Monday, figure out what pay scale you would like for those people to be at. So we did it in fifty cent increments?
Yes, correct.
And that way y'all can have an option, any choice. But it would be a little bit more take-home, and they would be able to work more hours. So it's a benefit to them, and the opposite end of it, where it's a benefit to you, is the hidden cost that y'all don't see with the taxes and that the employee doesn't see on taking home that y'all match. That's gonna cost less money to your funds, but we're gonna have to find the balance part. They can work more hours, they get a little bit more money, and we're saving money. But where is that line of how many hours can they work a week, more than twenty-nine, but not cost you more?
On the pay scale, will you have a solid, like, hourly rate? Or will you have, say, you wanna hire them and work them ninety days at ten dollar a dollar? In ninety days, you wanna give them a raise at part-time, is your skill vary?
Okay, so, we base it on a percentage of the pay scale. So whatever the pay rate is, your bill rate would be a percentage of that pay rate. So if you upped it, then that percentage would still be the same, it would just up the bill rate as it did the pay rate.
And what we can do is, we can include that in the contract, where if you want to adjust it and increase it, then you can request that with Dynamic, and then the two different groups get together and work that out.
Well, we still have to pay, uh, fringe benefits, will we?
No, that will, there'll be a employee of Dynamic.
What about, uh, some, uh, people that are on retirement? Will this, will it make more, will it interfere with their retirement, the money they can make on the retirement?
They should be able to make more, right now for the two thousand and nineteen year, the retirement has the max amount that a retiree can make in a business or a company that participates in the State of Alabama Retirement Service at thirty-one thousand. With Dynamic, they don't have State of Alabama employees insurance, the ERS that we have. So someone who's retired from the county or from the state, we can go through Dynamic and then-
Or the city.
Or the city, and make more money. So they could make thirty-five thousand dollars, or forty thousand would not be penalized.
Or maybe work full-time on their part-time scale.
Right.
I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
What's the drawback, if you're taking all the risk for the comp and we're saving money, what's that gonna cost us? Why would you be willing to take the risk if it's gonna save us money?
Well, because while you're saving money, we're also making money, I mean, because we get that percentage of their, their pay rate.
We're paying bill.
So y'all pay a bill to us, that we're gonna make a small profit on.
So what's that percentage you're gonna make off the county?
Um, well, it varies, depending on the position, I've actually, okay.
Each position has a different workers' comp code, okay? With a workers' comp code, like, most of the gentlemen that work out in your district, it's a five-five-zero-six. That means road construction, they have CDLs. With that, there's a higher risk that those people will be hurt or injured on the job. As clerical, we're eight-eight-one-zero. Eight-eight-one-zero has less of a likelihood of being hurt inside of their work area. So the rates are based off of what that percentage and probability would be that a company would have to pay out. But we have that back in the contract, that we will have printed off before y'all leave, for y'all to review. I think the most was around point three or point zero-three.
And the other question I got, is twenty-nine hour thing, I have, I've asked people in my company, they can't give me a clear answer, is, what, why is it legal for a contractor to hire a part-time forty hours, and it's not legal for a city or county?
Honestly, I wish I did know the answer to that.
But nobody in my company can answer that.
Well, yes, um, I did not make those stipulations, unfortunately, I don't understand that either, that's always actually been a question of mine. So I'm not gonna stand here now like I don't know, you know, when I, you know, but, um, all I know is we just roll with the punches, right? As any agency would do, so.
But it is legally to do this and approve, who approves it, is our board, uh, association kind of question approves it?
Yes, I talked with Sonny Brassfield and Henry yesterday, and also Ken Webb with Web and Ailey. I have been in correspondence with your county attorney, Scott Hunt, for the past two weeks, and he has also approved it. He's looked through everything and said everything looks great. He's gonna be out of town on Monday, and he said that he was ready for that to pass, if y'all want.
Any other questions? Kay, we, back on this first week.
Thank you.
We also supposed to, our board member, Mr. Ray San, uh, is gonna be replaced. Did we have, does he come from certain, uh, uh, district to replace Mr. San?
Yes and no. Uh, this is kind of two-fold. With NACOG, we had the one replacement, which was Mr. San's position. On the nine-one-one, we were originally told there were two positions, but there's only one because Mr. San has only sent the documentation and the other person has not. And you cannot remove somebody from the board unless they request to be removed from the board. Alright, with NACOG, what the county commission in previous years have done is they tried to get people from the middle to northern part of the county to be the board members, because they were closer to the master source area, and they figured that that would be more apt to go to meetings. So Mr. San is in District One, or he was in District One, but on County Highway One. So that position will be open through NACOG.
Do you want a request to be replaced?
Yes. On nine-one-one, it's a little bit different. Back in two thousand and four, y'all paid a group, y'all, county commission, called Lee Hams Associates. And through this agreement, they provided you with what type of people you should have on a nine-one-one board. I think it's on the, maybe, third page. It's got a county commissioner, EMA, sheriff, someone in the fire department realm, someone in the communication realm, I think somebody in technology realm, and police department possibly. So that was the type of fit that y'all paid for a study to have done, to be able to help nine-one-one further the type of work that it does for the county.
Well, is there any names submitted to nine-one-one? If not, I got one.
To be honest with you, I do not know, I have the letter that he is leaving, and I would suggest that Monday, y'all-
Who did we?
Mr. San. He's picked Lawrence, way.
Same guy, retiring.
Well, what about, uh, do they not have another board member fixing to leave also?
No one has turned in a letter or requested anything to be removed from that board, for the second position.
Well, I mean-
You say, will the District One, that who would need to recommend, or we just need to put somebody in that area?
That would be-
On NACOG.
That would be completely up to you.
That's on NACOG.
Right. Well, I've got one on NACOG, if, I mean, I can recommend him at NACOG, if we can do it Monday if they want to, or if somebody else has got one too, we can do whatever.
But my understanding of nine-one-one, there's no term limitations, they have to ask to be taken out of the board.
Every so often, I think it's a section term, there's requests except for the commission portion, and that usually rotates as the commission rotates.
Do we need to get our names announced, or they ready to Monday?
Completely up to y'all.
Well, nine-one-one, I recommend Wade Sullins.
Wade Sullins.
And on the NACOG, I recommend Tommy Shatton.
He's already on, on NACOG, he's on nine-one-one board.
I recommend him for the NACOG, he's been on the NACOG board before. I've met with him and talked to NACOG people, and they, they think he's, he's a good access for us, and he's in the northern part. And I did talk to him, and he agreed that he would help us all and do anything he could. And he gave me one hundred percent that he would help us and do what he could for us. Y'all wanna consider him, that's who I'd recommend.
On nine-one-one, I've had Donnie Winters to contact me about like, being able to serve on the board.
I'd like to recommend Randy Stoltz, nine-one-one. I'd like to, on the NACOG board, Phil Seagreath.
He's already on the board.
He stayed on it?
That was the person who replaced Tommy Shatton.
You have one on NACOG, Dan?
No.
This is my original copy, and here, will be here on Monday. But on the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day proclamation, this is a proclamation that y'all approve every year in order to support the awareness of the-
Elder abuse?
Elderly abuse.
And what about the judicial court referral letter of support?
Well, that is Judy Osborne, she does the court referral program and drug testing in both Marion and Winston counties through the court system. Every year, when she's doing her paperwork to be able to reestablish her business, which helps the county and keeps people out of their jail because they have their ankle bracelets on, we write a letter of support, or we do a resolution, I can do either one, whichever one y'all so choose, for that program to still be in place.
Do you have a copy of that letter we've written?
No, I need to know if y'all would need to do a resolution or a letter. But it just says, we vote Marion County Commission support-
Or have we been doing a letter or a resolution?
Y'all have done both. I can do both, and y'all can, we can choose on Monday.
Okay, just give us a sample of both of those.
Okay.
And the voting precinct resolution, who's, do you have information on that, or?
I do, that is what Stephanie has brought over. This is the resolution for precinct one voting place. Previously designated as one A, one B, one C, and one D, and-
That's here in Alph, okay.
That's in Hamilton. I've got that resolution, and the other resolution I have is for voting precinct seven, for Hackleburg, to be located at the Town of Hackleburg Recreation Center on First Avenue in Hackleburg. Those are the two resolutions that he has brought for approval.
Okay.
What about District Two?
They did not until he brought, do you want me to send Stephanie a text about another one, District Two?
Yeah, Scott was supposed to be working on it.
I think Scott had approached all of us about moving some of the voting places and doing that, but I think that's still in the making. Because some, I think, had a week check with their voters, some wants to move and some don't, so that's probably the reason that he's not following through on them.
Yeah, well, I mean, I told him Barnes, Fort Ry, everyone else is gonna be moved to third, fourth apartment.
What's the deadline on this, when do we have to vote for the next election?
Well, we've got several lines.
Oh, in other words, we can, uh, this don't have to be acted on Monday?
Yeah, we can, Scott and I spoke yesterday, that's the only thing I need to update y'all on, is your next commission meeting on the sixteenth. There are some things that he needs to get more time to have for approval.
Will he be back by Monday, or?
No.
Well, the next Monday, we'll discuss this and-
We need to move that June sixteenth meeting to that next Monday, for him to have more time to prep on some items that have to do with the jail.
Okay, okay.
So are y'all okay with moving the next?
Yeah, alright. Thanks, y'all.
Yes, sir. Just, I just got a couple of things, uh, we got a bid opening Monday on our in-place asphalt bids, and I'm not, I've got a doctor's appointment, so I won't be here, but I just recommend that y'all open them and then table them, then I'll review them and make a recommendation back to the commission. And, um, I recommend speed limit on, for maybe Monday on, I mean, on County Highway one twelve. Mr. Keith had requested that, and would recommend, um, thirty-five miles per hour down the Prospector Road, and then thirty miles an hour for the rest of it. But I'll do that in form of recommendation through a letter, and then I think Mr. Carter had asked about Boyett Drive, Boyett Road. And, and, and I'm gonna recommend twenty mi, twenty-five miles per hour for that, for that street. But, um, pardon me?
He said come closer.
Okay.
Tell him all how to do it.
Your spell on take late, what do you buy that for?
But, um, those, the items, well, no, I do have, um, Commissioner Carter and I talked about, he's got a surplus motivated truck that we'd like to transfer over and purchase in the two-way apartment. That, that is greater, which I think was twenty-five thousand, what?
Who that?
Me. Commissioner Carter.
Oh.
And then a dump truck that we can pull our tag-along trailer with the, with the back door on it, it would sure-
Well, do you feel like this is a good deal for both sides?
Yeah, we did get a tie of the truck.
Yeah.
That, that would be unofficial.
Did y'all ever find another dump truck?
Yeah, we did, and we're using it with the Apache crew, they're, they're-
Is that, I thought, I saw it going to a gravel pit yesterday.
I have found two trucks.
Yeah, you got a good deal on that one.
Yes.
But, um, that's all I have, I just, I've got a doctor's appointment, one of those make the meeting, but we went ahead and did an in-place asphalt bid. I did it for six months, and the reason I did it was, we may have to change some of the verbages or language in it when we get compliant with what this new gas tax may require some differences, so, but we've got some projects out there that we need to finish. We got County Route forty-two, and then we, depending on FEMA approval down there at Mount Hope, you know, we're not real sure. We're still in that process, we met with FEMA yesterday, and we're still trying to get all our information, you know, and I think Curtis and Mitch are probably contacting y'all. We've gotta get some dates from y'all, and some times, and some things that, that they're requiring.
What about the railway out there, a cutoff, if you don't check that?
Yeah, Lynn and I talked about that, um, that's one of our priorities, we're gonna try to get it to contract hopefully later, late summer. But, um, we've, we've got the signed agreement back from the DOT, and, um, we've been working on that H triple R, y'all seen us working on some of those shoulders, some of those gardeners are gonna go, so, we've been trying to get that, that project lined up, and then the next one in line would be the O seventy-eight. Yeah, we, we, we're gonna try, do everything we can, you know, we're gonna get that project running this year.
Well, will we have to bid that, since the stakes gonna pay for it?
Yeah, well, we'll be required to bid it, yes.
Well, I mean, what if, do they have set them out, or are they gonna pay what the bid is?
Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so, we will, we will be very closely watching those numbers, because it will be a maximum of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars is what we're gonna void it. And we, if anything over that, we'll be responsible for paying, anything under that, they'll get back and keep.
Was there anything on that project that we can, that me and him can do for our trucks, for anything else to get money back in our district?
Not, not on this project, this ST project, I mean, normally we can do some force account stuff on some of them, but this is, the work that's gonna be done on this is work that we really aren't qualified to do as far as law and ask for. Yeah, that's right.
I'm telling my, like, shoulder work for-
Yeah, and it's really not gonna be a lot of shoulder work, because we're milling down and then building back up, so there should be minimal shoulder work to be done. That's one of the things we wanna try to do.
Now, there's some trees needs to be cut.
Yeah, now, we could, we won't get reimbursed for it, but I'd like for you to come.
Well, do you feel like there's gonna be a job gonna be able to done, what the county, what the state's gonna provide?
Yes, yes, I do, I mean, we, we, we did an estimate, and, you know-
Does, uh, the contractor know what the state's providing?
Probably not at this point.
I mean, no deal, I mean, no difficult, we're not gonna, if it runs under, we're not gonna get to under, the state can get it back anyway.
That's right, any under run, we revert back to the state. I mean, we, we should be pretty close to the two sixty, I mean, and we've got a little weather room in there, we'll have, we got what we call CE and I, construction engineering inspection, that we can, that's not gonna really hurt us one way or another, we can save a little bit, y'all.
What about that bridge on seventy-nine?
Uh, yeah, we, we just gotta find a time to do it, you know, that's one of the projects, that's one of the projects, why we need this in-place asphalt bid, I knew there was another project. You know, that's, that, this, this bid was suited with that project in mind as well. And I don't think it's gonna take that long, it's just, we just, we've had a lot of rain, and we've kind of gotten behind a little bit, and, um, you know, yeah, that one will be done under that contract.
Could you write me a bid sheet concerning the surrounding of certain piece of, with?
If you're, we can, we can write some general requirements and send it out for competitive bid. If you've got some basic criteria, if you've got the basic criteria, then I can write a general-
What all, I don't know what all I need, uh, I got very basic here, but I need more.
Well, let me just, let me look at it, and then let me just get within-
Alright, I'll get with you on that, so.
We, we can, I can get, we can go over this.
Alright, okay, I'll get back with you.
So you want me to send out, uh, competitive bids on, on an excavator?
Yes.
Okay, I can do that.
And I'll get with you.
And we, we, yeah, that should be a problem.
I had a gentleman call me the other night about speed breaker, putting one in, I told him, to my knowledge, I would ask you and the lawyer, but to my knowledge, the county didn't do speed breakers.
I, I don't recommend them, um-
They're responsible for putting them up.
Yeah, that's what I told him.
Maybe they create a hazard, I mean, I think you're creating a hazard, and actually, I went to a seminar once, where the city of Tuscaloosa got sued because they had put some up, and there was an act, and there was a big litigation, a lot of lawsuits, there was a lawsuit, and it was recommended that we not put up speed breakers. We can put up speed limit signs, we can't enforce it, but we can put them up, it's up to law enforcement to enforce the speed limits. It's up to law enforcement to enforce the speed limits. And, and if it's gonna be legally binding, yeah, we got bottles of... But if, if y'all do have, um, roads you want for speed limits, but, um, it needs to come through y'all as a commission if it's gonna be legal and binding. You know, it, it may be through a resolution for a document.
I need a dead end, so, broke a dead end road.
I, I get with you.
But this is only a dead end street, so, you know, that's...
We recommend it. I would recommend it.
I told him, I didn't think we would recommend it at all and...
Yeah, we'd, we'd not do that. But... And I'll be getting to y'all later about the gas tape, make sure we need to find some things on that, try to get all that. That's all, gentlemen. I should, I got something else.
I have a little, uh, thought of something, Ms. Kay, over there. What's, what, uh, timeframe are we talking to get hired? Uh, do you advertise, you do the advertising in the paper?
Uh, we advertise on Indeed, we advertise in the paper, uh, we use Facebook Jobs, we actually do several avenues, um...
Usually, it's a two-week process usually?
Uh, yeah, if that.
Okay.
A lot of that depends on the job.
So I need to get with, uh, with Brooke, she can, uh, relay the message, what I need.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, uh? I wonder if Jimmy had anything, say he wasn't gonna get the...
Is this recommended on new employees or old employees or...
Well, what we'd like to do from a financial standpoint is our current part-time employees, have them meet with Kay if y'all approve this on Monday and start a transition over so that those employees can reap the benefit of being able to work more hours to help y'all during the summer months and make a little bit more money.
What they choose, they don't work more hours, is that prerogative?
Well, the county will need to look at some different options on some financial situations in certain areas.
And when will, when will our part-time people need to meet with y'all?
Well, if everything, if y'all vote and agree to this on Monday, then we talk about Tuesday, on Monday afternoon, just whatever y'all decide.
What about we, we talked, when you talked about this, uh, I've got one, you know, that's just more or less seasonal. Do I need, will he need to go through them or can he stay like he is?
It would be more of a benefit for him to go through Dynamic for him. Um, if not, we're gonna have to look at some different financial avenues.
Is there any other questions or any other thing we need to speak about today, Brad? I think they're here motion with you.
I'll make a motion.
Second? We got some motion second, I'll go back and say aye.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.